Hi everyone, this is Libby. And we are doing a Daniel study on a Zoom platform. And at first, I did not record the opening sessions, but there have been several requests to do so. So I'm going back and doing the introduction in chapter one and chapter two, and trying to catch everyone up to date. Because Daniel is a very important book to study these days, as well as the Book of Revelation for these unprecedented times we live in. So, thank you for joining us, and let's get started. So, the focus was understanding how to approach the study of the Book of Daniel by learning the principles of study and the biblical patterns. Sometimes you have to do some homework before you actually start a book in His Word. As always, remember Yahweh's Word has final authority in any study. There are great scholars out there, and I glean much from several scholars and teachers. However, we should always take these insights back to His Word and see if they be so, just like you're watching this Daniel study that I'm putting together. So, we should always be good Bereans and cross-check and verify everything. As Acts 17:11 tells us, "These were more noble than those in Vessel and Ika." These were the Bereans, in that they received the Word with all readiness of mind and searched the Scriptures daily whether those things were so. And their teacher was Paul. So that tells you a lot. So, this Zoom study group, we are going by the book, Daniel: Understanding the Dreams and Visions by Charlene Forts. But we are also pulling in at times different commentators and teachers, their insights. Now, this particular book is written from the Ramesh historical point of view, which we will get into later. This foreword is written by, let's see, his name is Butch. Butch Johnson. And it pretty much sums it all up. He said, "Many years ago, a pastor introduced me to the Bible. I was just a new Christian at the time and had virtually no understanding of the principles of biblical interpretation. True, I had been raised in a home hearing some of the basic Bible stories like Daniel and the Lion's Den. But I had no idea as to how to go about reading the book that I had just been given. The instruction that I was given by this pastor did not give me the necessary tools for good, sound biblical study. As a result, I spent years bouncing from pillar to post, looking at the various denominational perspectives that exist out there in the world of Christianity. The necessary tools for sound Bible study were not taught there either. What I found was and still is a religious world that is very confused as to what the Bible actually says. A religious world overrun with denominations all claiming to be, quote unquote, "the way, the truth, and the life." A religious world totally confused as to what the Bible actually does say. A religious world more interested in what their denomination says, customs and traditions of men, than what the Bible has to offer. Needless to say, this was a major dilemma for me as I was starting out on the narrow path. As I read and studied my Bible over the years, it became apparent that there are principles of study which, when adhered to, bring clarity and focused understanding. These principles of study brought biblical patterns alive as brushstroke was added to brushstroke in my understanding of the overall biblical picture. Experiencing biblical truths fosters primitive godliness, the same truths that in the past brought forth the faith of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob. As you, the reader, become acquainted with these principles of Bible study, clearly outlined and explained in this book, and allow the Bible to be its own expositor, you will leave denominational confusion behind and enter into the world of biblical Christianity. Revelation 1:3, "Blessed is he that readeth and sayeth that hear the words of this prophecy and keep those things which are written therein, for the time is at hand." 2 Timothy 3:15 and 16, "And that from a child thou hast known the holy Scriptures, which are able to make thee wise unto salvation through faith, which is in Christ Jesus, Yehoshamashiach." All Scripture is given by inspiration of Yahweh, and is profitable for doctrine, for reproof, for correction, for instruction, and righteousness. You are about to enter the world where the prophetic book of Daniel speaks. Enjoy this adventure. And again, that was written by Butch Johnson, who was the editor of her book. "The Book of Daniel is said to be one of the most authenticated books in Scripture." Let me read that sentence again. "The Book of Daniel is said to be one of the most authenticated books in Scripture." In the New Testament, Yehusha quotes several times from the Book of Daniel. Why is it so important for us to know that the Book of Daniel is well authenticated? Adam Clark's commentary on the Book of Daniel reads, "The Rabens have endeavored to degrade Daniel and have placed his prophecies among the Haggaiographa books, which they consider to possess a minor degree of inspiration. And it's probable that he meets with this treatment from them because his prophecies are proofs too evident that Yehoshamashiach is the true Messiah, and that he came at the very time, at the very time that Daniel said the prince Messiah should come." So, that's the definition of the Haggaiographa books below. And it states the books inclusive in that. It's the third of three Jewish divisions of the Old Testament. Keep in mind, always keep in mind, 1 John 2:23, "No one denying the Son has the Father." Settle off, let's read that again. "No one denying the Son has the Father. The one confessing the Son has the Father as well." Common thread of the Bible is that it is an integrated message. Paraphrasing Chuck Missler, he said, "The Bible is made up of sixty-six books penned by over forty guys over several thousand years, yet these sixty-six books are an integrated message." Excuse me. "The design is skillfully integrated. Its origin is outside the dimensions of time." The word is Yahweh, Yehusha. John 1:1, "In the beginning was the Word, and the Word was Elohim, and the Word was Elohim." Generally, the Book of Daniel is divided into two basic parts. But in this study, we will take a deeper look into the construct of Daniel. But for those that are not very familiar with the Book of Daniel, because we have new believers and new people, new to His Word, and then we have seasoned believers in our Zoom study. So, we try to find a happy medium. So, the historical section is usually referred to as Daniel 1-6. But don't get confused by that, because there's also much, much prophecy in the first six books. So, those usually consist of Daniel and his friends being tested. The second chapter, Nebuchadnezzar's Forgotten Dream. Third, the Golden Image and the Fiery Furnace. Four, Nebuchadnezzar's Second Dream. Five, Belshazzar's Feast and Downfall. Six, Chapter 6, Daniel Delivered from the Den of Lions. Then, the second half of Daniel, Chapter 7 through 12, consists of heavy prophetical books, chapters. One is the, Chapter 7, of course, is the Vision of the Four Beasts. Chapter 8 is the Vision of the Ram and the Heggoat. Chapter 9, Daniel's Prayer for Jerusalem and the Answer. Chapter 10, Daniel's Vision by the River Hadekal. Chapter 11, The Conflict of Nations. Chapter 12, The Last Judgment and Epilogue. So, that's just a general outline put out by F.B. Meyer. In the opening chapters of Daniel, we will see Daniel and his companions exiled to Babylon. We also today find ourselves exiled in Babylon. It may be mystery Babylon, but we are most definitely exiles, exiles in a fallen world. And whether you look at it as being Babylon, whether you look at it as being mystery Babylon, whether you look at being exiled as we are in Egypt, the thing is that this world is not believers' homes. We are citizens in heaven. We belong to Him. We are royal ambassadors here in this fallen world. "The wheat and the tares will grow side by side. We see pattern after pattern, such as with Zedekiah and others, not listening, not listening to the voice of Yahweh through the prophets, yet choosing to listen to the voice of the enemy using man's flesh. Kings throughout biblical history many times wrongly chose to listen to their magi, their wise men, sorcerers, the astrologers, and those using occult practices, instead of to those sent to them by Yahweh." In most biblical accounts, you see the same three voices surrounding leadership and kings, as also we each experience in our daily lives. This is why the first warning Yehusha gives to his disciples when they chose to follow him was the following. And be very much aware that this warning is given to us as well. Matthew 24:4 and 5. And Yahweh, I'm sorry. And Yehusha answering, said to them, "Take heed that no one leads you astray; for many shall come in My name, saying, 'I am the Messiah,' and they shall lead many astray." That's why we take every teaching we participate in back to His Word, check the Scriptures, and see if these things be so. Because teachers are human. Teachers may teach something in error, either knowingly or unknowingly. And also, teachers can only teach others from their current understanding of His Word. Deception will be our number-one enemy. 2 Corinthians 11:13, "For such are false emissaries deceptive workers, masquerading as emissaries of Messiah; and no wonder, for Satan himself masquerades as a messenger of light. It is not surprising, then, if his servants also masquerade as servants of righteousness, whose end shall be according to their works." And there are several Scriptures there for you to look at. So, what are the sources of these three voices? Well, first and foremost, we stay in His Word daily, and we listen to His voice speaking to us. And we take every thought captive and bring it under submission to His Word. That is how we develop the mind of Yehusha, and we follow the will of the Father, and we carry out the words, acts, and deeds of the fruit of the Spirit through our emotional responses. The other voice people can be influenced by is Satan himself and his minions. Through TV commercials, through movies, through radio, through people that are not believers, Satan can use the flesh of non-believers and believers to speak words of death into other people's lives or to speak their opinions. Much like when Yehusha was talking to Peter, and he was telling him that he would be crucified. And Peter was saying, "No, no, master, let that not be so." And he looked at Peter and said, "Get behind me, Satan." He wasn't speaking to Peter. He knew that Peter was listening to the wrong voice. He was being influenced by Satan himself because the purpose of salvation came through Yehusha. And if he did not carry out the crucifixion on the cross, the death, burial, and resurrection, laying down his life and taking it back up again, we would be forever lost, and we would be without hope. So, you see how Satan can influence people's thoughts, even believers' thoughts. So, that is why His Word always says, "Take every thought captive." And then sometimes, we simply go by our own fleshly desires. So, these are the main three voices that rule our lives. And our goal is to always be influenced by the voice of Yahweh only. For it is no longer we that live, but Yehoshamashiach that lives in us and through us. So, we can learn much from the Book of Daniel with his three companions, whose biblical names were Hananiah, Meshiel, and Azariah. Of course, we know them often by their pagan names given to them in Babylon as Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednego. But whenever I can, I try to refer to them with their biblical names. So, in order to finish well in these days, we need to resolve now to not compromise and make sure we are listening to Yahweh's voice and His voice only. We will see Daniel, Hananiah, Meshiel, and Azariah exhibit high moral heroism, and we can learn much from them in these last days that we face. Chuck Missler brought out elements of moral heroism in Daniel and His Three Companions that he noted. They had, even though they were young teenagers, they had discernment. They resisted evil. They were bold enough to voice disagreement even before the king. They had physical courage. They had perseverance, and they had determination, all these elements that we too should exhibit. So, in this first session, we want to look at principles of study and biblical patterns laid out in the first 21 pages of the Daniel book. So, this is laying the foundation. And later, we will do an overview of the Old Testament timeline, if you will. So, we will see when all of this is taking place. We'll look at that. We'll review the divided kingdoms of Israel, the northern kingdom in Judah, the southern, and the tribes that made them up. We will look at the three sieges by Babylon, Siege 1, 2, and 3. Yes, there was not only one siege, there were three sieges to siege Jerusalem. I may have said Babylon, but it was by Babylon sieging Jerusalem. And we will look at the location when they were exiled to Babylon. And we will discuss how the northern kingdom of Israel had prior, had been exiled prior to Assyria, and many had congregated in Ekbatana. Now, we're going to look also and educate ourselves about doctrine as compared to prophecy. Doctrine equals pillars, represent immovable biblical doctrinal truths. Prophecy is like racehorses. Represent the forward progressive movement of prophecy. And we see the horses riding right now. The prophetic horses are riding. We see daily things taking place in these end-of-days. So, prophecy can be looked at as unfulfilled history. History can be looked at as fulfilled prophecy. Doctrine can be compared to pillars that do not move. Doctrines are eternal truths that stand firm in the Bible from Genesis to Revelation. They do not change. Prophecy, on the other hand, is very different from doctrine. Although prophecy often includes doctrinal truths, prophecy is not doctrine. Prophecy can be compared to racehorses that are constantly moving in a forward progressive manner. One day, we can't wait. One day, all prophecy will be fulfilled and stop the forward motion of prophetic time. Doctrine, however, will still stand firm forever. Daniel as Compared to a Drama. This was articulated in Charlene's book, and I will probably do a separate video to review that. But it's talking about how the Bible is the greatest love story ever written. And it contains the hero, Yehoshamashiach, the villain, Satan, and the bride, the believers, in Yehoshamashiach, those that have been washed by the blood of the Lamb, those that are washed daily and are in the sanctification process and being washed by His Word daily. So, this particular book that we're studying right here, Daniel, is by Charlene, is written on the historical level until the verses in the vision push the context forward into the future. Excuse me. There are still a few verses in each vision that have not had fulfillment yet. I've recently learned, she said, that there can be three levels of interpretation for Daniel's prophecy. The peshat, this is a Hebrew term that applies to the first level of prophecy, the level meant for the literal people in times in the day the prophecies were actually written. The remes is the second level of interpretation that applies the prophecies to the historical past. My book is written, she said, on the remes level, which is the interpretation most are familiar with. However, I was awed at how much more there is to know on this remes level, information that has been missing for decades. This new information begins to come forward in Daniel 7, and definitely in Daniel 8, 11, and 12. Do take notes of these areas. And she has her own website as well, that you can contact her through her website. Now, the drash level is the third level. So, Charlene's approach is written on the remes level, the historical perspective. Okay? Now, the drash is the third level and applies the prophecies to our time and place in the world right now, for this generation, the end-time generation. So, an example of the drash level interpretation of Daniel would be like Tom Stapleton's recent study on the Book of Daniel and Revelation. And so, and there's also a fourth level of Sode. And there's more detail in these different definitions, but this is just an overall approach. So, everyone will kind of know the approach that we are taking this go-around to the Book of Daniel. Now, a whole channel, YouTube channel or BitChute channel could be devoted on just the study of Daniel and Revelation. So, there's so much to be said. But we have to start somewhere, and we have to focus, and we have to make sure we have our foundation right before we move forward. And we always have to take everything back to His Word and see if these things be so. So, reading the prologue in Charlene's book is also very important. And I will probably do a separate video on the prologue as well. But we will see how Yahweh passed the scepter to Adam. And we know about the fall of Adam and Eve in the garden, and how the power to rule was seized by Satan. We see that power go to Nimrod at Babel. Then, we see the scepter being passed through the earthly kings, Babylon, Medo-Persia, Greece, Rome, and so forth. And we're going to see much, much more. And there's so much happening in between this passing of the scepter that we'll try to get into as well. It's so multifaceted. So, she noted, "The scepter of power or dominion to rule is passed from one system to another until the full circle is completed, and then Yehusha will come." There's so much happening today. And many of you have probably watched YouTube videos on The Economist magazine, The World in 2017. But there's so much on this cover. And these are the, sadly, sadly in a way, but glorious in a way, these are the days we live in. And you see, the majority of world leaders and the global cabal are occultists, and they practice witchcraft, sorcery, and they communicate through symbolism. And so, this is very much part of their communication. You see the tower. Now, the tower is signifying when Martin Luther nailed his 95 thesis to the door at the All Saints Church and other churches in Wittenberg, like the Castle Church Tower. It's very similar to the picture there on that first card. And you see the division. See, the enemy always wants people divided. Left-right paradigm, always divided. They want people fighting against each other. They want racism to interend. They want division. They want to kill, steal, and destroy. And so, that picture clearly depicts that. And then, the judgment card, you see, they have Trump depicted sitting on a US flag curled up like a snake, and he's holding a globe, which is a common pose among the elitists, and holding like a scepter rule and a globe in his hand. And it looks somewhat like a crown. Isn't that interesting? Corona, a crown on the whole globe. The next is the world, and everything's being connected, like the Internet of Things, the 5G that they are pushing and so forth, the tracking mechanisms and so forth. And then, you have the hermit, you know, social isolation. Everyone stay in step. Everyone obey, obey. You see the earth at the base of that mountain-like, and it's cracked. And the moon in the heavenlies and so forth. And then, the death card, the grim reaper, if you will. You see, like, locusts flying in the sky. You see something like a nuclear explosion or war. You see a fish in a river that barely has any water left. So, these are communicating their plans. And also, like the magician, they are sorcerers. And the 3D, the AI, artificial intelligence, or AR, augmented reality, everyone being the same, redistribution of wealth, so forth, so on. Their magical world. So, all of these things heavy into electronics and producing those augmented realities. So, you see the headgear that is on that individual. And the will of fortune. You see two voter boxes, you know. Again, the world wants to divide us into Republican, Democrat. And more than likely, they already know who's going to be their president. And the various countries, who bows down the most. It's just spin the will of fortune, if you will. And the star. Now, we know in Revelation, Satan is referred to, the star that falls from heaven. It could also be Wormwood, and so forth, so on. So, we see the evilness in the world, and we see the global elite that follow Lucifer. that follow Lucifer depicting their plans. So we see this pose that is common with the scepter of power, if you will, and the globe in their hands as they pass that scepter of power from one system to the next. We've seen that through history, through all the kings and queens and Queen Elizabeth and and the depiction on The Economist 2017 magazine as well. So we took pause in this Zoom study to understand one another as we approach any study. We know as believers, we are not to be double minded. We are not to be fleshly carnally minded. We are to have the mind of Yahusha, a sound, stable mind. But often we do not apply that to the corporate perspective goal of believers. And because of that, there's usually a lot of infighting and you know, I don't believe that and that's not the way it is. And I want, I wanted to share why that happens and how people can avoid falling into that trap. So to your left, the red triangle represents the mind of Yahusha. When you have the mind of Yahusha, you are the closest to reality and truth you can be. That's the goal individually and that's the goal corporately. When you drift into the other direction, is fantasy over here to the left. So we're going to see carnal mindedness and being double minded. So the corporate goal of believers is the goal of all these people that are believers, all their minds working toward and being in the sanctification process to to have the mind of Yahusha and follow the will of Yahweh. But that takes time and we are all in a sanctification process at different points. So we have to allow grace and be respected of where people are in their walk and work together without throwing temper tantrums and leaving sessions or walking out of a room or acting in the flesh. So we needed to take pause and look at this. So though we are many, we are to have the mind of Yahusha corporately, a mind of peace, love and soundness. And we know that Yahusha is the way, the truth and the life. He set the highest of highest standards for us to learn by. So the carnal mindedness is very close to fantasy land. They, the enemy wants you to spend all your time in sports, in video games, glued to the TV in the movie theaters because this world wants to shape your mind. And they want you to be in the double minded category, the right-left paradigm, the Hegelian dialectic of problem, solution, reaction. And then lo and behold, we'll come up with a solution that now you can follow. So you have to be mindful of these things. You have to stay in his word. His word in this world is the only truth. So our goal is to not be carnally minded and not be double minded, but be of sound spiritual mindedness. On the other hand, the one world order, the 2020 agenda, the 2030 agenda, they want people to be in that cardinal mindedness. They want people to be in that double mindedness. They want the one world hive. They want everyone to come to them. They want you to stay in step, march in place and do what they say. And if not, there's penalties. So that's, that's what we're dealing with here. They don't want people to know who Yahusha Hamashiach is. They don't want believers to know that they are saved by the blood of the Lamb and that the word, his word, the Bible teaches all truth because Satan is a liar and the father of lies. They don't want people sound minded. They want everyone double minded and fighting against one another. And when you see that, that's from the enemy. So carnally minded people stubbornly hold to their own opinion regardless of truth. Two, envious of others who have more or who possess more. Three, practices no self-control over appetites and desires. Four, only associates with people who are on one's level of thinking, social status and class. Five impulsively are led by selfish appetites. And then the double minded is the right-left paradigm. Republican against Democrat, so forth, so on, race wars. All these things are promoted by the enemy to create chaos so they can usher in their solutions. These riots, all of these things, those that wear masks with this coronavirus, those that don't wear masks, so forth, so on. Division, division, division. Don't play the game. Wake up. Time is short. Get into his word. That's all I can say. It's up to you. We are to each work out our own salvation with fear and trembling. No one else can do it for you. Your grandma can't help you. She can instill truth through the word. And maybe she didn't even have the word. So it's up to you. Get a Bible, start reading it and find sound biblical teachers to follow. And there's many, many false teachers and false prophets out there. It's full of landmines, so you have to tread cautiously. I have a lot of teaching videos that are helpful as well as others that are helpful. I watch Toward to the Tribes a lot. They have a YouTube channel, teacher Matthew Nolan. So that's another good resource to follow. So the world wants us in fantasy land. And Yahweh through Yahusha Hamashiach wants us in reality. He wants us to see the schemes of Satan and not fall for him. The carnal mindedness and the double mindedness in the individual and corporately as a corporate body, believers, non-believers, whatever, produces instability and divisiveness. Matthew six twenty-four, no one is able to serve two masters for either he shall hate the one and love the other, or else he shall cleave to the one, excuse me, and despise the other. You are not able to serve Elohim and Mammon. Blasphemy against the royal khakadash, the Holy Spirit. Mark three twenty-two and three twenty-six. And the scribes who came down from Jerusalem said, he has Beelzebub and he cast out demons by the ruler of demons. And calling them near, Yahusha said to them in parables. How is Satan able to cast out Satan? And if a rain is divided against itself, that rain is unable to stand. And if a house is divided against itself, that house is unable to stand. And if Satan has risen up against himself and is divided, he is unable to stand, but has an end. In Exodus nineteen five and six, which begins our marriage covenant contract to Yahweh, it states, and now if you diligently obey my voice and shall guard my covenant, then you shall be my treasured possession above all peoples, for all the earth is mine, and you shall be to me a reign of priests. Read that again. And you shall be to me a reign of priests and a set apart nation. See, believers all over the world are part of his kingdom. And we are only royal ambassadors in the various countries we live in. He's, we are, we are, we, our citizenship is now in heaven. Those are the words which you are to speak to the children of Israel. In Beastwatch News, Kimberly Rogers Brown shares this. The three elections in Israel were brought by Yahweh himself to begin the political state of Israel's destruction by forcing Jerusalem to rise as mystery Babylon. Let's read that again. The three elections in Israel were brought by Yahweh himself to begin the political state of Israel's destruction by forcing Jerusalem to rise as mystery Babylon. Yahweh's monkey wrench in Israel's politics has caused a shifting of politicians and mergers between parties like nothing seemed for in modern Israel. The result of which is new Israeli government that now operates at the behest of the Sanhedrin. For the first time in modern Israel's history, a majority of Knesset members are in full or partial agreement with the Sanhedrin's agenda to take control of Temple Mount, all of Jerusalem, all of the West Bank, and to make Israel into a quote unquote Jewish only state. The only partial detractor of Israel as a religious state is Abidore Lieberman. He is though in favor of everything else. He's going to find out he can't have all those other things without Israel becoming a religious state. Now, we must understand how the enemy also redefines terms. The term Jew is often misused. Today, those that believe in Yahusha Hamashiach and have been washed by the blood of the Lamb and have been circumcised of heart, if you want to refer to them as Jews, as the Bible does, that that is the true Jew. The the believer of the promise given to Abraham. Whereas many say they are Jews and are not, but are the synagogue of Satan. So so there must be a distinction there, just as the understanding of who is Israel. Israel are those born again, born from above that are being brought together by Yahweh himself and not the current Jewish state who usurped the name Israel and was created and authorized by man in nineteen forty-eight. That Israel will be used by S A ten himself to usher in the anti Messiah into their man-directed third temple. Because believers with the royal khakadash living in them and through them, his word tells us that we are the temple. So beware of terms like the term Jew, the term Israel and and how they use the third temple as being justified to be built when his word, Yahweh's word, tells us through Yahusha Hamashiach, we are the temple. So the enemy has twisted so many things and have confused so many people. But Yahusha has proposed to us, anyone that wants to come to him, from every tribe, every tongue, every nation, every people, there's no discrimination whatsoever. But everyone must go through the door of Yahusha Hamashiach and be circumcised of heart. So that's a whole different sermon in itself, but just wanted to touch some highlights for now. We must remember it began in Jerusalem and it will end in Jerusalem. Having discussed double mindedness, we see in this article a clear example which is a definite conflict of interest. It was titled dual citizens in Congress. We need to know. Now, this is a clear case of if you're going to be a dual citizen and you're going to work in Congress, that is a clear case of double mindedness. It says it's important for citizens to know if their representatives have dual citizenship because both real and apparent conflicts of interest erode public trust. So this is an article that you can link up to. I'll leave the descriptions below. The video teachings that you can read them on your own. But just be aware of this double mindedness. And there's nothing wrong with me and a dual citizen, but if you want to work in a leadership position of a country, then that's a conflict of interest. This is another article and a lot of these articles are being scrubbed from the internet. So I'll leave this one too in the description section. And it's titled Senators and Congressmen Who Hold Dual Citizenship With Israel. So who exactly is running the United States? Is it the United States or is it Israel? There's much to be said on that topic as well. Components of the introduction to Daniel. We're going to look at the nature and purpose of the Book of Daniel, the four historic prophetic outlines in the Book of Daniel. We're going to look at recapping charts. We're going to look at the rise and fall of seven earthly kingdoms in the Book of Daniel, understanding outlines in the Book of Daniel, understanding timelines in the Book of Daniel, definitions, the hermeneutic principle. We're looking at sequence and continuity through the hermeneutic principles. And and the reading level of this particular book is about the eighth grade level. So we'll be looking at all. Okay, so where do we find ourselves in the Book of Daniel on the biblical historical timeline? That is the question. So this is just a brief review of where we are at. We're just going to look at this little timeline and it shows two thousand B.C. That's when Abraham received the promise from Yahweh to make him a great nation. And so through by faith, Abraham received that promise from Yahweh. It was unconditional. And as we progress through the timeline, we see that Moses is called to lead the people out of captivity of Egypt. Foretold to Abraham that that would occur. So that occurred about fifteen hundred B.C. And we know that they were went to the base of Mount Sinai and that's where Yahweh proposed to them with their marriage ketuva, their marriage contract. And he wanted to make them a kingdom of priests after the order of Melchizedek. But they were disobedient. It didn't last forty days and then they sinned with the golden calf. And they broke the covenant. And he wanted them to be a kingdom of priests from every tribe, tongue, people and nation, peculiar people, a set apart people. But they broke the marriage covenant. And he was ready to wipe them out, but Moses intercedes for the people and he relents. And instead, he gives them the book of the law to spare their very lives and the Aaronic Levitical priesthood was implemented to to implement the book of the law, the imposed book of the law. It, the book of the law was not a blood ratified covenant as was the marriage covenant in Exodus nineteen five through Exodus twenty-four eleven. And be mindful that that Aaron, Nadab and Abihu, the two oldest sons, were even at the covenant confirming meal of the Book of the Covenant. So they were within the Melchizedek priesthood before the So they were within the Melchizedek priesthood before the Aaronic Levitical priesthood ever was established. So after the sin of the golden calf, the Book of the Law is implemented. And during that time period, that, that began within that forty-year period of wandering in the wilderness, and it would stay in place until, very important word, until Yehoshahamashiach would come and restore the Melchizedek priesthood back to the reigning position. It always ran parallel to the Aaronic Levitical priesthood implementing the Book of the Law. But he would restore it to the reigning position as our high priest after the order of Melchizedek, when he came the first time. So we know that Moses was not allowed to enter the promised land on this particular timeline chart. We see the tabernacle system was implemented under the Book of the Law. We know Joshua led them into the promised land. And then time rocked on, and the people wanted a king over themselves. And, and so King Saul is brought into the picture. And then after King Saul, King David took over, and that occurred about 1000 B.C. And at that time, they were united, a united kingdom between Judah, Israel. They were one. And then after David, Solomon took over and built the temple in which David had gathered all the supplies for him to do so. After the death of Solomon, we see here, the light green and the green, that's when the kingdoms divided after Solomon's death. And Rehoboam became the king of Judah and Jeroboam, the king of Israel. The Israel had about, had ten tribes, and the southern kingdom had two, inclusive of the tribe of Levi. So, so the northern kingdom of Israel lasted until they were exiled to Assyria because of disobedience. Yahweh allowed them to be exiled to Assyria. Judah, the southern kingdom, lasted about 145 years longer before they too were so disobedient that Yahweh allowed them to go into captivity by Babylon. So that's where our story begins in the Book of Daniel. And so we see the tabernacle system when they were in the wilderness. We see the building of the first temple. And then we see the sieges laid on Jerusalem by Babylon, which took three sieges to complete. The gap is referring to that seventy-year servitude that they served in Babylon before being allowed to return to rebuild the temple, which is sometimes referred to as the second temple, which was enhanced by Herod, King Herod. And so sometimes it's referred to as Herod's temple. But our study is taking place right here. Hold on, my PowerPoint is acting up. Okay, 606 B.C. And we have King Nebuchadnezzar, represented by the gold head of the statue, which we will get into later. It is followed by the Medo-Persian Empire, represented by the silver arms and chest in 539 B.C., followed by the brass belly and thighs, representing Greece in 331 B.C. And then the Iron Kingdom of Rome in 168 B.C., in which Yehoshahamashiach came the first time. Was, he was born under the Iron Kingdom rule of Rome. And he was also born under the Book of the Law, until he could usher in the new blood ratified covenant with his precious blood, therefore putting the Melchizedek priesthood back to the reigning position and him as our high priest and us in covenant with him, blood ratified with his precious blood. So, so the statue period of time that King Nebuchadnezzar dreams of, th- these are the points in history that they represent. And then we see Yehoshahamashiach is born, and then seventy years later, the destruction of Jerusalem. So the divided kingdom, and we do some reviews here and there, because like I shared before, some are new believers and, and some are seasoned believers in our study group. So we try to go in the middle of the line at times. And the divided kingdom, again, the southern tribes belong to Judah, which represented the tribe of Judah, the tribe of Benjamin. And the Levites would implement the temple services. And the northern kingdom of Israel were the ten tribes listed here and are often referred to as the ten lost tribes. They simply are scattered among the nations now. And to know who is who, only Yahweh truly knows. And sometimes people will say, well, people can get a DNA test. Those are not accurate. So some of us may have blood lineage back to these twelve tribes. Some may not, but those that are not, that believe in Yehoshahamashiach are also grafted in. Even the twelve tribes have to believe and receive Yehoshahamashiach and enter into his covenant before they too enter the marriage covenant of the blood of the Lamb. There's only one way. So this map is just showing how, when Israel was exiled, is represented by the purple line. And Assyria, they were taken to Assyria and settled in various areas. Excuse me. And then Judah, 145 years later, was exiled to Babylon, represented by the green line there. So we have the exile of Israel, exiled to Assyria, 145 years later approximately. We have the southern kingdom, Judah, exiled to Babylon for seventy years. And then they returned to rebuild the temple. So this is just another map showing the closeness of Ekbatana, where many were exiled to, from the northern tribe, northern kingdom of Israel. Were located in Ekbatana, very close to Susa in Babylon, where Ezekiel would be able to be a prophet to both the northern and southern kingdom from that point. And of course, we also know Babylon took over Assyria as well. So the exile house of Israel settlements were in the province of Ekbatana in Media. They were within easy reach of Ezekiel, who lived among the earlier exiles of Judah within the northeastern borders of Babylonia. Daniel and Ezekiel were contemporaries, and we will see that as well. Now, this is a chart by Chuck Missler that shows the kings of Babylonian empire with Nabu Pelosar. His son was Nebuchadnezzar, which is a major key player in the Book of Daniel. His son was Evel Murdock. Then he had a daughter, then he had Neri Glizar. And then he had Nightecris, which was a daughter that married Nabonitis. Through Neri Glizar had Labashi Marduk. And Nabonitis was the father of Belshazzar, that we will look into as well. Now, this particular chart is just another overview of a timeline, just to kind of keep people oriented to where we are in history. Again, the kings are up here, Nabu Pelosar, Nebuchadnezzar, his sons, his grandsons. And this is the Neo-Babylonian empire, which then is conquered by Medo-Persian empire. And then we, we see the players of Darius and Cyrus and so forth. And then below here, starting at 606 B.C., we see the first siege of Jerusalem by Babylon under Yehoakim. And then the second siege was during Yehoachens, king, kingdom reign over Judah, even though they were all serving in a vassal position. And then Zedekiah was taken in that third siege. We see Jeremiah was a prophet to the southern kingdom, though the kings didn't listen to him. They listened to their magicians and sorcerers. And we also see Ezekiel was a prophet to them and is taken, will be taken in the second siege. And we see Ezekiel being a prophet to both the northern and southern kingdom while they were in exile. So this is just to help everyone understand where we are at on the historic timeline. So the three sieges by Babylon, the first siege was of Jerusalem. Yehoakim was released as a vassal, like just minimally in charge. Babylon had taken over. The temple was plundered, the hostages were taken, Daniel and his three companions were taken. And this begins the seventy-year servitude of the nation. The second siege, Yehoakim ignores Jeremiah's counsel. There's much rebellion. Yekaniah is captured with 10,000 captives, including Ezekiel. So you see that account also recorded in Second Kings and Second Chronicles. Zedekiah, his uncle, was installed as a vassal after him. Jeremiah and Ezekiel warned against rebellion, but false prophets again prevailed. And then following came siege number three. 587 B.C., Zedekiah also ignores Jeremiah and Ezekiel's warning and yields to false prophets and rebels. And the third siege results in the destruction of the temple and the city, which begins the seventy-year desolation of Jerusalem. So we have two seventy-year periods. One is the seventy-year servitude of the nation. They would be in captivity for seventy years. And the other seventy-year period, excuse me, right there, is referring to the desolations of Jerusalem. So capturing what took place on that last siege with Zedekiah not listening to Jeremiah, we read, "In the ninth year of Zedekiah, sovereign of Yehuda or Judah, in the tenth new month," when you see moon italicized, it's really referring to month. It wasn't actually in the scripture when you see a word italicized like that. So, "In the ninth year of Zedekiah, sovereign of Judah, in the tenth new month, Nebuchadnezzar, sovereign of Babel, and all his army came against Jerusalem and besieged it. In the eleventh year of Zedekiah, in the fourth new month, on the ninth day of the new month, the city was broken in two." So that was a time span of about 1.5 years. Wasn't an overnight event. "And all the heads of the sovereign of Babel came in and sat in the middle gate, and all those are listed there, and all the rest of the heads of the sovereign of Babel. And it came to be when Zedekiah, the sovereign of Judah, and all the men of battle saw them, they fled and left the city by night by way of the sovereign's garden, by the gate between the two walls, and he went out toward the desert plain. But the army of the Khazdine, the Babylonians, pursued them and overtook Zedekiah in the desert plains of Jericho. And they captured him and brought him up to Nebuchadnezzar, sovereign of Babel, to Riblah, in the land of Hamath, where he spoke judgment on him. And the sovereign of Babel slew the sons of Zedekiah before his eyes in Riblah. Life was not very precious then, and as we see today, it wasn't highly va- it's not highly valued either with what the enemy promotes. The sovereign of Babel also slew all the nobles of Judah. And he put out the eyes of Zedekiah and bound him with bronze shackles to bring him to Babel. And the Khazdine burned the house of the sovereign and the houses of the people with fire, and they broke down the walls of Jerusalem. And Nabu Zaredan, chief of the guard, exiled to Babel, the remnant of the people who remained in the city and those who defected to him, with the rest of the people who were left. But Nabu Zaredan, chief of the guard, left in the land of Judah, the poor people who had not whatever, and gave them vineyards and fields on the same day." So not all were taken into exile to Babylon. So that brings us up to chapter one. So this is going to be very exciting. I'm learning and studying along with everyone. I enjoy your comments and insights. We just have to understand that this is, this study is, the main focus is on the Remez interpretation of the Bible, the historical interpretation of Daniel. And who knows, maybe once we get through this, once through the historical perspective, and, and we will most certainly pepper it with things that are current in our day and age. But again, the main focus will be from the historical perspective. So be sure to put your comments and questions and so forth as we study together and enjoy the journey with us. So thanks so much for joining me.